Thank you, and back to our community meeting for October 17. We're going to do a pledge to plan, and I have the Brown and Shook 560, Brett and Woods, come up here, please.
And also the Pines, we have a few new Pines.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I'm a Republican, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Yeah. Not over my, if I just speak. Same way you were before. I'm about to split out. I don't want to be a horizon, everybody. I'm going to go a little bit of a show off. This is the Pines they've ever been, also.
I'm going to take a two-minute recess, and once again, I want to thank the Brown and Shook 560, Brett and Woods, and the Pines students again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
They give us a recess.
And thank you, we're back. I'm going to move on to number four, superintendent's update. Dr. Murphy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Scerito. Welcome, everybody, to the board meeting. So just a couple of updates. First off, today at the high school, the guidance department led by Mr. Campanelli hosted their college consortium for our students, over 50 colleges and universities in attendance, answering questions, marketing their campuses. So many staff members wearing their college gear today in recognition of the day at the high school, so that was great to see, so thank you very much to that group. The past weekend was very busy, starting with our Hall of Fame ceremonies. Thank you to Mr. Butler, Lisa Massey, they're helping him for pulling it all together, that Hall of Fame ceremony, always well-attended, special for our honorees and attendees. Special note that Mr. Tasman was amongst the honorees this year as well, with his baseball teams, so it was great to see him, all smiles over the weekend. Also want to thank Mr. Whitehorst and, of course, Mrs. Ferrara for leading the way with our homecoming over the weekend. And I'll just say, events like this, you know, don't happen without the help of so many others, so that's Pat Caffrey, that's Mike Raffini, that's Steve Nelson, the clerical staff at the high school, there's just so many involved in that, and somehow it always comes together, and the somehow is because of the work of all these different people, so thank you to all. Excuse me. Also, just got some information today, we remember Kicks for Cancer was on Tuesday, October 3rd. This event has raised, over the years, north of $450,000, which is just incredible, so that's the past 16 years. But today's email from Mrs. Calessa, Coach Calessa noted that this year alone, $56,000 was raised, so just incredible. The weather worked out for us that night, unlike every Saturday, seemingly for the last three months, so thank you to Coach Calessa, the entire team who helped support that effort this year and every year. Next, I just want to recognize six of our high school students, and you're going to have to bear with me on names here, but six, six of the students that were named, commended students in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. They placed them on the top 50,000 students who entered the competition, and the congratulations goes to Jamie Barshay, Mahika Grande, Israel Rojas, Saris Sagorahu, Sadiq Shaikh, and Elliot Tafla on this fantastic academic accomplishment. Mr. Whitehorst, afterwards, I'll expect you to correct me as to where I went wrong with the names.
Four to six.
All right. Four to six. Next, just, we had a Pines 3rd grade student, Vincent Calvinese, recently was the recipient of a proclamation from Suffolk County legislator Leslie Kennedy. So here we go, first-place win in the New York State Science Fair. Vincent placed first last year in the Pines Science Fair and the Brookhaven National Lab Science Fair with his project Five Second Rule Breaker. He continued on to the New York State Science Fair where he won first place, so incredible job to Vincent. And my last note is a special thank you to our Board of Education. This is School Board Recognition Week, and I actually printed up a sheet from NISBA, it's a fact sheet, and I must smile, reading this as our board encapsulates many of the bullets on it, I'm just going to read a couple of these. "With schoolchildren, their primary focus being school board members, to develop a budget presented to the community, align district resources to improve achievement, support a healthy school district culture in which to work and to learn." So these seem almost kind of just overarching generic statements. This is the summary that I always point to, and I always leave this. Coming out of exact session, I feel the same way as I always do. Whenever we have a conversation in this district that leads to a decision that may benefit even one student, this board of that supports that decision. I see it every time, 7-0, if I can show how this will help a student. So I want to thank the board, so many hours that people do not see of donating their time to this community, many of you for many, many years, so thank you all. And in recognition of this week, Cabinet kind of joined together, Rebecca and Tim, and we purchased you some gear that we're going to hand out now to all of you. The gear includes the new Hop Hug Eagle logo. I picked the sizes, so if you're going to be angry with anybody on the fit, I deserve the blame, I took some guesses, so take a look inside the bag and let's see what we got.
Very nice. I saw it together.
That's from all the cabinets. Okay, thank you, Mr. Scerito, that is my update.
I want to thank everybody for that. As far as I go, I thank you, and I think we have amazing students, so I feel an honor to even work with them. You sort of go on to this thing, and just kind of bring up the charge, Dr. Murphy, to give you a gift now, of course, when you give your one to you.
Sure.
I spoke to you at the homecoming, and unfortunately, the weatherman is never right, and we had a tough rain day again. Maybe in the next couple of days, weeks, whatever, if there is a Saturday or a Sunday that we can have a Hop Hug Day to, you know, recognize all the people that we have, I told you I could get sponsorship, so, you know, it would be very minimal cost, have a parade again, I just think it's, the one thing Hop Hug has, we don't have a town, so that's our community, so I'm just seeing if that's possible.
So I will share with you that there are some ideas in the works that may answer that call.
Fantastic, thank you. I'm going to move on to 5A.
Yeah, yeah, I'll invite up my friend, Dr. Demusio, I'm not going to steal her thunder here for this acknowledgement, but I do have to say, Dr. Demusio's here, and lots of her friends in the back, to honor a special individual, Mary Ann Lieberman, and I just want to say, and again, I want Claudine to kind of say the words, but we're a very grateful district for what happened at the Pines, and it's, not to be hyperbolic, but it's, if it wasn't for Mary Ann, we would be potentially dealing with a, you know, very sad situation. So with that eaten, I'm going to ask Dr. Demusio to come on up and recognize Mary Ann. And we know that the spotlight is not necessarily what Mary Ann wants all the time, we're giving it to her anyway.
I know, but too bad this time. She has no choice.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for allowing me this time to honor and recognize a really heroic effort and act on Mary Ann Lieberman's part. As our school nurse, I have had, well, as the principal, I have had her as my school nurse, and I've had a tremendous honor to work with her for many years, and she is always very thorough and very thoughtful in her process and her practice. And a couple of weeks ago at Pines, we had a staff member who wasn't feeling well, and who was experiencing some shortness of breath, tightness in the chest, and you know how difficult it is to sometimes convince another adult to do something like, go seek medical attention right away, or, you know, do the right thing for themselves, because they want to be there for the students, or they think it can wait, and she insisted that the staff member stay in the office, her office, and she called 911, and she had medical assistance there pretty quickly at Pines, and when the gentleman came from the MT service, they took her immediately to the hospital, and it turns out, one of them came back to explain to Mary Ann that she literally saved this person's life because the tests at the hospital had showed that the person was in hard distress and needed very desperate medical attention. So I could think of no better way to honor her than through the community love and gratitude. She really exemplified to me our Choose Love efforts with courage and compassion in action. She is a hero to me each and every day, I can't thank her enough for all the things she has done over the years, but this in particular really exemplifies the kind of person and devoted professional she is for other healthcare professionals as well. And you can see, I have so many staff members who are here tonight just to support her and recognize her, because they also love her so much and recognize how special her actions are in our school, so thank you for tonight, and thank you, Mary Ann.
Just going to take a 60-second recess, and let the teachers go back to school. You have a tough superintendent, it's difficult.
Hey, thank you all for coming to support.
And we're back, thank you very much. I want to give, thank you very much to that nurse, Antae. Okay, we're going to move on to 5B. Okay, 5BA.
5BA, yep.
We're going to go Christine O'Connor, please. Ladies first.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. So we just wanted to be able to give you some highlights about the opening of school and let you know how everything is going. So, grade six, the biggest concern in middle school is, will the sixth graders learn to open up their lockers? It really is, in the beginning, that is everything, when you look at their cute little faces as they're walking in the building, and they're always worried, will I get lost? Well, I want you to rest assured, they are doing fabulous. Our sixth graders, it is now their second home, I love going down, we have them in their own wing, and you just see them so excited, big smiles every day, and it really does melt your heart. So they have mastered everything they need to master at this point in time. You have kids from three elementary schools coming together, and students who have never been in the district before, and it's wonderful to see how they're making new friends. We make sure to take special attention to look at the social relationships when students are in the cafeteria and in other situations. So I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank our amazing monitors that are in the cafeteria. They put that extra special touch in, report back to us, our guidance counselors or social workers, if they see kids need a little bit of help making friends and making connections. So we've spent a lot of time in all grade levels, having the counselors in at the right time, us looking around, make sure that the situation in the cafeteria is something that's welcoming, so that every kid could be excited and looking forward to that. The year, of course, kicked off with our Code of Conduct meetings, where we do go over safety rules, regulations, and, as well as discipline. However, what we are going to be doing is a refresher in November. What we do with our administrative team, we take notes and we work with our MTSS team, which is our multi-tiered system, support systems, so that we can identify what areas do we need to help students grow in. At this age, a lot of times, in certain areas of maturity, do we hear name-calling? Do we hear exclusion going on? Anything that we're picking up on within the school that we know we need to help students with, it may not be straight-up discipline. It's usually things that are more those soft skills that we have to emphasize with them. So with that, we're using our Choose Love program as the vehicle to deliver that information. Rather than have a Code of Conduct meeting where you're going over rules and regulation, what we're doing, and we've done things like this in the past, that Dr. Murphy has observed, we're focusing on two of the components of Choose Love, courage and gratitude. You know, Thanksgiving is just around the corner in November, and by framing everything around courage and gratitude, do you have the courage to invite the student who isn't with somebody else to sit at your lunch table? Do you have the gratitude to make sure that you express thank you to your parents who bring you to all your practices? So we'll be going over how they can demonstrate these two characteristics in school, as well as outside of school, and that ties into our overall SEL program. Our SEL committee works with our librarian, who is the lead, Mrs. McCarland, and our video club creates videos, so we use our advisory time to showcase those videos. The videos go over various areas of SEL, in addition to using it as an opportunity to highlight student recognition. So we're excited to continue expanding that advisory program, but at least two to three days a week, there's a video that we put out to further engage students in our advisory. The beginning was wonderful, one of the most important things we want to do is get to know the parents, so we've been having a big push to make sure a lot of phone calls are going out, meetings, but what was wonderful is, we had a really great turnout at back-to-school night, and it was wonderful to have so many parents around. Our middle schoolers, a big push for this year is making sure our students are involved beyond the classroom, and we have a bunch of ways that we're going about doing that. So one is, if you've noticed, we've been sending out weekly our co-curricular club catalog. It's an active live document that we've been sending out weekly through Parent Square, so we update every time teachers set up a new club, it's ongoing, parents can see the times, the dates, and there's a signup process where they log on, automatically goes to a Google Sheet, and that gets sent to the teacher, so that I can monitor attendance after school, so I always know which students are involved and where they are. What we're also going to be doing is tracking participation at a variety of events and activities, so we're interested in seeing a gap analysis. Are there students not participating in clubs? Are there students who are not involved in anything? So we're doing our own internal tracking, and then at the end of the first marking quarter, we're sending out a survey to the students in advisory to find out, what are students involved in school, so some of it they could self-report. What outside activities are they involved in? For instance, we have a student who's a high-level gymnast, she's an active part of our school, but she doesn't have time to participate in our clubs and activity, but she has 100% that eagle pride and spirit, but she's in competitive gymnastics. So I know that there may not be a club that she's going to attend, she's completely a large part of our school, so I want to see what's going on with kids inside and outside of school, so that we can tailor clubs towards them, and that will be part of the interest survey for the students. But these are some of the things that we're currently in the process of tracking. Kicks for Cancer, for instance, if you notice, I think it was more than half of the middle school was there that day, so we've been pushing attendance, we wanted to see the kids there. We were selling T-shirts and all kinds of, you know, items that they could wear and participate in, because we want to really have a strong community connection and make sure our students are engaged well beyond the classroom. Some other things that have been going on in the school is, shout out to our middle school PTA, they hosted an incredible Welcome Back Breakfast. So it's important that we have things for the students, but we're also focusing strongly on staff morale. I'm going to let you know, a breakfast pizza, everyone likes that. So anytime you're going to an event, you bring a breakfast pizza, you're making friends. Our PTA council, they hosted such a professional-looking bakery booth at our homecoming, so I do want to give them a shout-out, because without the support of our PTAs, they've been wonderful with helping us. They were at our school today, we had photo day and our book fair, and as you know, everyone wants to grab a book and some of those little tchotchkes, so I apologize if you all at home now have those, like, fingers that they're poking into their siblings, that was our fault. Our events that are coming up, we have our Fall Festival dances that are taking place next weekend. We changed the format a few years ago, we wanted to make sure that all our sixth graders were strongly encouraged to participate, and we realized we didn't have enough room in our cafeteria to fit all the students, so it used to be, years back, cut off after a certain number signed up. I don't like cutoffs, so what we did is, we have the sixth graders stay straight through the end of the day, at 3 o'clock, they have their Fall Festival from 3 to 5. This way, I know that there isn't, there aren't kids who are going home and don't have rides back. I know at least my sixth graders, every single one of them, has an opportunity to participate. We're having them turn in the permission slips early, and like we did the last couple of years, we go through and I call down the kids, say, hey, are you sure? Do you want to go? Why didn't you bring back your permission slip yet? Because our goal is 100% participation. After that, we have in the evening, the 7th and 8th graders have their time, so from 6:30 to 8:30, they will be participating in the Fall Festival dance. Middle School Talent Show is coming up on Friday, November 3rd, and that information, again, is on our live document that we send out weekly, that lets you know about our clubs and activities, and it's also posted through a link on the school website, so parents can see whenever it's being updated. And we'll also have our PTA auction night on November 16th. So that's just a little overview of some of the direction that we're going with things, and some of the things that we've had go on so far, so thank you.
Ms. O'Connor, I want to thank you again for all you do and all your staff members. Is there anything your middle school needs? That's one thing my board members bug me, they always ask, but I always ask, is there anything the middle school needs?
You know, right now, we had donation money, we're picking up the games, additional balls and so forth, so all of that, we roll it out a little slowly too in the beginning, so you don't have 30 balls flying around in the yard, but we are adding more and more to recess, so we're in really good shape there, but I do appreciate that, and I will let you know if, if things do come up.
I think it's fantastic with Choose Love and the positive atmosphere, we really need that, so thank you.
And I really do believe the way you approach students, I believe in not approaching things with the negative, by all means, your consequences have to be firm, but I think that if you hold high expectations for students and you frame things with the expectation that they're going to do right, they're far more responsive than when you run an assembly and you list everything that, if they do, what the consequence will be. You can still say what the consequence will be while showing them that you believe in them, because if you tell someone that they're going to do, do good in this world, they're far more likely to do good in this world than if you tell them what's going to happen if, you know, your only thing is punitive. So that's been our problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Christine. And before I start, I just want to attest to the breakfast pizza that's been mentioned, it's fantastic. I can tell you that I've been to many PTA Welcome Back Breakfast, we also had one, that was the first thing that went, and it was within one period it was gone. You wouldn't think of, you know, breakfast pizza, I had never seen it before, but, you know, it's amazing, that's all I can say. Thank you to Amy Barshay, who I know helped spearhead that and bring that in for us, and for the middle school as well. I thought we were special and got the breakfast pizza, but it's okay, we'll share. We'll share, most of it, not all of it. So if you get one, just make sure you get a slice early, that's all I'll say. All right, but anyway, thank you all and our board members for the for the constant support of everything we do at the high school. Uh, and thank you for inviting me here tonight to brag about our school a little bit. And thank you as well to our district office team for always being there to answer my questions and help me navigate through all the challenges being a principal entails. This is my third year in the role, and it's actually just about my two-year anniversary being appointed to the role, and I wouldn't be here without your support, so thank you. At the high school, we've had an incredibly successful opening of school. These first six-plus weeks, I've seen a lot of events, updates to our facilities, successes in the classroom, in the arts, and on our athletic fields. Just prior to the opening of school, we welcomed in over 250 freshmen for an open house orientation, where they got to interact with our ignition mentors and get a tour of the school. It was the first time we did our orientation in that format. Typically, it's a bit more lengthy and structured. This one, it was fun to have the students in, we celebrated them as they came in, they got to tour their classes in the building, and then they got to go. Uh, we also welcomed dozens of parents for a parent orientation the next day. Both events were very well-attended, even though it was the end of the summer and right before Labor Day. And that's just a testament for how much our community cares about the school. In our first weeks of school, we continued our work from last year to honor our hometown heroes, which included a 9/11 commemoration ceremony that many of you were there for, or saw the video for. It was such a powerful moment to remember all those whose lives were lost 22 years ago, while also honoring those who put their lives on the line every day in our community. Our football team also held a Salute to Heroes game that was very well-attended, and I was there, so I can attest to how many people attended that. It was basically a mini-homecoming. I'd like to thank Mr. Butler, Mrs. Ferrara, Coach D'Esso, and our Football Booster Club for working to put that together. We made a lot of efforts in the high school to increase school spirit as well. This year, for the first time, we ran a fundraiser for the senior class, where students were able to reserve and paint their parking spots. Dozens of students participated, and they had so much fun doing it. So if you ever get a chance and you see the north lot empty, check out some of the designs our students made. They were really creative and they had a ton of fun doing it. And then, just as important, they raised a lot of money for their class that they were able to use. We also held what students have been asking me for, for seven years since I started here. We held a pep rally, or what we called the Eagle Spirit Rally, for the first time. Um, this gave us the opportunity to get the entire school outside together, to get excited for homecoming. It was honestly one of my favorite days in all my time here at HopHog. The students and the staff had so much fun. We had teachers running across the stands, we had the, the kids were excited. Every single student was there and connected, it was so much fun to see. Uh, Dr. Murphy can attest to how much fun it was, had a pie in the face. Um, he definitely got the worst of it, out of the two of us. Um, and I know Mr. Tasman wanted to participate, but they ran out of whipped cream, because they used it all on me and Dr. Murphy.
It was convenient.
It was a very convenient ending, yeah. I think they hid some of the cans, or there was something going on there. Um, but anyway, this, this rally, it was amazing, and it was the end of Student Council's Spirit Week, which was fun to see students participating in, and staff. And Dr. Murphy mentioned a few events we've had. Just this past weekend, we held homecoming. Unfortunately, for the second year in a row, we had to cancel the parade. Mother Nature got the better of us. Uh, but the day was still amazing, we persevered despite the rain and the cold temperatures. While the final score was not what we wanted, we won't talk about that. The team played hard, we had an amazing turnout, and we were still able to celebrate our homecoming court, Mr. and Ms. HopHog, and honor past, present, and future students who serve in the military. We also got to honor, uh, a recent graduate, Denis Kadenov, um, whose family unfortunately had a tragic accident this past summer, but we were able to honor them, and, uh, our former student Alona Kadenov. It was an amazing pre-game ceremony and an amazing day. Also, this was mentioned, just a couple of weeks ago, we held our annual Kicks for Cancer event, which is huge for the high school. And both of our soccer teams won. There was a, uh, I believe, uh, you know, dominant fashion. I think we had two shutouts. Um, that, so the games were amazing, but on top of that, raising, as Dr. Murphy said, tens of thousands of dollars for cancer research is the best part. Uh, we couldn't do that without the organization and help from Mrs. Calessa, Coach Calessa, and Mrs. Ferrara, tons of other people as well, Mr. Caffrey, Mr. Rafini, Mr. Nelson, everybody at the high school. Our other teams also raised money as well. Um, so our volleyball teams, for example, including the girls' volleyball teams just last night, supported the same efforts in their annual Dig Pink Games and fundraisers. In facilities news, our gym floor was done by the beginning of October, so not quite at the start of school, but as soon as it could be, and it's beautiful. So if you haven't checked it out, make sure you get to the high school to check it out soon uh, for some games, or whenever you can. Um, and again, though it took time to get there, we made it, and it will pay dividends for our students and our community for years to come. In terms of academics, we're rolling right through quarter one, which, believe it or not, only ends in about two weeks, or ends in just about two weeks. Just last week, we had every 10th and 11th grader signed up to take the PSAT, and we had about 100 seniors take the SAT, all in the same day. We deeply thank the board for their support in this and paying for their students' exams. Um, every single exam was paid for, and the students, uh, many of these students wouldn't have taken these exams without your support. Uh, so we're deeply thankful for that, and they'll have access to colleges that they might not have known about, and opportunities that they might not have had without that support. We also, that same day, ran digital citizen, citizenship workshops for ninth graders. Uh, and we had dozens of students attend, even though they didn't even have to. It was great to see that students wanted to come anyway, to learn more about Navions, how to be, uh, safe on the internet, and how to make good choices. So that was great. Thank you to Mrs. Brophy and our tech integration specialist, Mrs. Sealy and Mrs. Becker, for putting that together. In safety and other news with the high school, just like Mrs. O'Connor mentioned, we met with each student to review the highlights of our code of conduct, and we practiced all of our required drills, including lockdown drills. This week, we're also highlighting the Dignity for All Students Act through announcements, random acts of kindness, and nominating an Upstand of the Month. I've already received a number of nominations for that. Uh, what I'm doing is trying to get students in the habit of, uh, speaking up for others, um, and just trying to do nice things for others. Again, the hope is that all students know that the high school and all of our schools in the district are environments-free, from all harassment and discrimination. Also throughout our first six-plus weeks, we had a very successful open school night, and today we had the college fair, just to name a few other things that we've had going on. And as always, we send out weekly wrap-ups, and we send out our daily announcements through Parent Square every single day, so we can always be sure our parents, our students, and our staff are in the know about everything going on at HopHog High School. I want to thank my team of assistant principals, all the teachers, counselors, social workers, security, custodians, food service workers, and everyone who works at the high school for the incredible work that goes into making all these things happen. And overall, things are going great at HopHog High School. Couldn't do it without all of your support, and we're definitely in an upward trajectory. Thank you.
Mr. White, I want to thank you and your staff for all you guys do, and of course, somebody asking you, is there anything in the high school needs that we should be aware of?
Thank you. Yeah, and then actually, once you asked Ms. O'Connor that question, my wheel started turning. So, I'm always thinking of things, and, uh, I'll, I'll try to come up with some, some things, and I'll connect with you.
And then I have another request, um, being from a military family. You have that beautiful new flag. Is there anywhere that can be displayed, maybe somewhere in the gym or some? I hate for it just to be put away for two days a year and used.
Well, we hope to use it for way more than the two days, yeah.
Well, maybe it can be hung from the rafters somewhere and then taken down for special occasions. I, I just hate for it to be sitting down somewhere.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we, we got it right before the 9/11 commemoration ceremony, so, um, you know, we could use it for a lot of different things. Open to any ideas. The hope is we could do more ceremonies like that. Um, you know, we'll be doing one later in the year around Memorial Day. As often as we can use it, we will, because it was, uh, it's amazing to see that on our field.
And just to piggyback on that, of course. Uh, Glenn, we have the two flags, thank you, that we normally hang at the high school. Um, we've already able to do that yet, because the roof was still being worn down. How, how big are those two flags?
Um, not really, they might just... I think they're bigger than eight by 12.
Probably, yeah, way bigger. Well, maybe something like, we'll, we'll think of ideas.
I was just thinking, some of the high schools you go by, it'll, it'll say, "Come out actual underneath us." Absolutely, it's got a flag, you know, just something. Our Board of Education, we have those things that can come down when we do the parade or something like that. I don't know, the flag should not be sitting somewhere if it can be used and displayed.
Absolutely.
Just my thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you both.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm gonna move on to five, see the adoption of minutes. Is it being a...
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Capital fuck. Dr. Murphy, thank you.
I did, because it's full members. All right? All right, so, um, thank you, Mr. Sealy, and thanks to everybody who's in attendance. Uh, Miss Siena and I are going to talk about a bar proposition. Um, I'm gonna start off by framing the discussion, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Miss Siena for a bit more detail. Uh, this first slide is intentional. It includes our new district slogan, "Learners Today, Leaders Tomorrow." I always, we always incorporate that into our presentations uh, to show that that is not just kind of a slogan that we say and repeat. It has a tremendous amount of meaning to us, and really, it's our, our guiding principle. What do we need to do to ensure that our students, or our learners today, become leaders tomorrow? So I always like to reinforce that for the board, that that wasn't an exercise in a checkbox, and now it becomes, I'm watching on a sort of most everything that we do. So, just a little background here. Uh, this was mentioned earlier tonight, when we talk about events like, um, Kicks for Cancer and Homecoming, uh, there's just a tremendous amount of pride in the district, uh, and it's, it's evident. Um, we didn't have the weather at Homecoming, but we did have Kicks for Cancer, uh, and it was just a tremendous outpouring of community support. There's recognition that our HopHog High School, of all the buildings, has become kind of the hub, the nucleus of not just the district, but our community. So with that recognition, right, and, and we see here aerial views of all of our buildings, this is the combined secondary campus. But we, we love our district, words and all, but we are talking about how do we address some of the voids, right? So, uh, if you've been in the district a long time, you know what I'm talking about. It's tripping over cracks on the tennis courts. It's sitting through 100-degree heat in the pines, uh, for pine graduation. Um, it's walking through the mud at Homecoming, because there's dirt that surrounds, uh, the, the one area that we do serve some food, but there's no bathroom there, so you're hitting the porta potty, and that's not the most enjoyable experience either. Um, so I'm giving just a sample there, but I don't think it's, um, I say a commentary to say, there's tremendous equal pride throughout the district, and there's also recognition that we are constantly looking to do better and to improve. So with that backdrop, we embark on a path. The board, of course, is step one, they authorized the facilities committee. Uh, and with that facilities committee, which included Dr. Krapp, who is the chair, Ms. Alvia, and Mrs. Capice, uh, they, they then undertook an effort with some of us who are on that committee, Mr. Holm, Miss Siena, myself, uh, to undertake a building condition survey report. Uh, through that survey report, a facility study was created. Right, and basically, that is a very detailed, granular look at all of our buildings, every nook and cranny, to see where are their opportunities for improvement. And to be honest, that list was very, very long. Right, because part of that work is visiting BBS, our, our great partners, who we appreciate, uh, meet with all of our district leaders or building principals, and we do an exhaustive search and then look at each of the buildings and say, where are we trying for improvement? Right, so again, that produces this very detailed look at our campuses, our buildings, like I said, every nook and cranny. From there, we settle on a goal. Right, and these are my words, but I believe that this encapsulates nicely kind of our charge. Create the conditions that allow our students to thrive and reach their fullest potential. Now, I printed up the district vision statement, and again, uh, to reinforce for the board, we did a lot of work with our branding, but also in re-identifying who we are as a district. So that included this vision statement, which I'll read, a mission statement and board goals, right? Along with our slogan, your imagery, which again, you can see, uh, throughout our presentation and, uh, as part of a vision for the future of our, of our district. The vision statement, "Our graduates will be lifelong learners, critical thinkers, effective problem solvers, and future leaders. Every school will be a robust learning environment, offering rigorous academic programs, extracurricular activities, and various educational and vocational pathways for all students to reach their full potential." Right, so this, kind of distillation of that vision is, how do we create the conditions where this vision becomes our reality? Right, so we, we settled in the facilities committee on a few lenses. Right, this is kind of the filters that we look through. What does it look like for our students when it comes to the instructional experience? Health, safety, security, they're not learning, if we're not keeping our campus secure, where our students come and just feel that they can be themselves, they feel safe and secure. Of course, their health and well-being, we heard our principals tonight do a great job of kind of capturing, uh, the efforts that happen in, in the buildings here and in the previous meeting, our elementary principals did the same. And then, what does it look like in the extracurricular world, our athletic fields, our, uh, different courts, the different opportunities for students? And I, I want to say this kind of proudly and intentionally, that, that that is just as important as what's happening in the classrooms, because I've seen with my own kids, when our students, when our kids are involved in activities, um, when I'm watching HopHog volleyball teams play, and the girls connecting on the sidelines and chanting and doing fundraisers, it creates this sense of community within our teams, on the fields, and that's part of the fabric of the entire HopHog community. So our charge as a facilities committee, let's create those conditions. So how do we do that? Well, it requires funding sources, right? So certainly each year, that's part of the charge of the board, is pay superintendent, pay cabinet, pay leadership, come to us with a budget that, is there an issue?
Yeah, it's on the, uh, the upload, because we have it there, just that, before we hit the, uh, refresh it.
Oh, thank you. Um, key mark to the recipe. Um, so our funding sources, so what is our approach here, right? So just to kind of restate perhaps some of the obvious, each year we have the budget, and again, we look at, uh, we look at that with a very focused lens on how do we create a budget and present it to the community that the board will endorse that benefits our students. So that's clearly one bucket, right, big bucket. We also have reserves, many of them are targeted, some are capital reserves, some are reserves for different, um, for some different areas that we have to address over time, uh, and that's a, another bucket. And then lastly, a bond, right, taking on debt. Um, this district, looking at the history, we've always, uh, embraced, I'm gonna say, previous boards of that, and, and this one as well, the fiduciary responsibility of taking on debt as a means to address larger, long-term needs that are required to create the conditions for us to be successful. So we've always had an approach of kind of looking at these three buckets and having a, a balanced approach to ensuring that we're fiscally responsible, we're in good standing, uh, with the different rating agencies, and that's been, again, going back decades, our approach. So with that backdrop, we are offering up a new bond proposal of $50 billion that will, on balance, and, and again, this is always, um, uh, you know, one of the more important slides, is what's the impact of new debt, right? So in previous presentations dating back decades, it's understandably, we want to quantify, what does that mean to the, to a taxpayer? So we took a homeowner value, uh, that's kind of on the higher end in terms of what the current median house price is in the area, of $714,000. So the impact for the homeowner with that, um, homeowner value of $714,000 would be about $108 a year. So if you do the math on that, nine bucks a month, roughly 30 cents a day, but that's the impact of the debt. The reason that that's not, let's say, higher is really people. What is, that our approach with the bond, uh, includes a stab in approach to, to... One is that our approach with the bond includes a staggered approach to taking on the debt. So as you can imagine, Miss Siena will get into some of the detail here, but there's a lot that's included, and we spent a good amount of time as a facilities committee, like I said, going through all the nooks and crannies to create a vision that has a lot in it to benefit our kids. So there's a staggered approach to taking on debt. We're a district that when we spend a dollar as part of a bond, it really costs us 45 cents, right? So that's another way that that cost is mitigated. The second variable here is that we have existing debt, as we always do, that we'll be peeling away. So the combination of staggering our rollout of the bond, debt coming off, and the aid that we give back allows us to have the impact you see here, again, on a house of $714,000. We looked at houses of less, you know, a $600,000 house, just to state the obvious, that would be less of an impact per year for a homeowner with that debt. So that is the big picture backdrop. The what's contained within the bond, within this bond, again, for each of the buildings that surround the campus, I'm going to turn it over here to Siena to get into some of that.
Okay, so taking a look here with an aligning our goals, speaking to curriculum and instruction, there are enhancements that we are looking to make within this bond. Some of those enhancements, and all of these enhancements, help to enrich student lives here at Hop-Hop before they go on to do adult things. So looking to the right, these photos with the three blue blocks, and to the right of that is the courtyard area. So currently, there's a handball court, there's volleyball, and then there's a nice H shape. And towards the bottom of the screen, this is a sample or example. As we start to look at going from idea to vision and what the vision looks like as far as design, we will certainly develop a subcommittee that will include people to help us determine what a design will look like. So in this sample, as you can see, or maybe not see, because it's quite small, there's some shaded seating, there's outdoor learning spaces and places where teachers can come out to the courtyard, take students to an area, and have a class out there. As we've learned from COVID, it is important to be in different learning environments, and there's many studies out there that will talk about the facilities that you're learning in. So is the grass mode, are the windows cracked? If all those things are yes or no, your learning environment is different. So we would like for the best learning environment possible. So other things here as well, so the Eagle Watch would be looking at a renovation to the pre-production studio. Then science research, taking a look at the middle photo, it shows an example as well for upgrades, for better enrichment there. And then fitness center, there's not an example on this board, but taking a look at expanding the space and revitalizing the space as well, which we will see a little bit further on in the presentation. So speaking to health, safety, and security, one initiative that is district-wide is the replacement of all doors hardware, including access controls. So that means that the badge that was meshing around on me before, you could go up to a door, put it to it, and open it quite easily. It would help with the security operation if anything happened, if we needed to lock down quickly. It would be just a push of a button on your cell phone, not necessarily a button button. So other things with security would be the vestibule, both at the front loop, we're looking at, as you drive into the front loop itself, there would be a security booth right there, and then access gates at that point of entry there, and coming around the loop, going into the teacher lot. Just more points and places that we can make sure we understand who is coming into our buildings and making sure that they belong there. Next, over in the student lot on the north side, creating another security vestibule there. So as you enter the building, you are asked for your ID to verify who you are, if you're coming, if you're going, and go from there. Overall, for the district, we're looking at PA speakers and making sure that they tie into our software as far as security to make sure that everyone can hear if there is a message that needs to go out or people need to do things quickly. And then phone improvements for the whole entire district as well. Taking a look for safety and health, so site reconfiguration, this example is the high school. Taking a look at the front loop, the bus loop, and then the whole south lot leading into the service area as well. So some examples on the board here, top right, so we're doing some pool or anticipate to do some pool improvements, which include the adjoining locker rooms, so that's a sample there. Again, as we get into the design development, we will need all hands on deck to determine what it looks like for Hop-Hop. Bottom right is the security north entrance for students, and then that middle photo is the current facility as it is as you're coming into the main football field. So that was muddy and it'd be nice for it to not be muddy any longer. Middle school, so again, district-wide, phone improvements, door replacements, and then air conditioning is something that we're looking at taking on for every single building. So moving away from having any sort of gym or any sort of, any sort of graduation or some other ceremony that you're not sweltering by the time you leave, the Veterans Day event at Forest Brook, anything like that, to have a space that's air-conditioned where people can sit there long-term. Along with that, ventilation upgrades to all the buildings, not necessarily just the middle school or the high school. Overall, there's work that needs to be done. So looking at a building condition survey from even 2015, there are items on there. So priority one is the highest need for safety and security reasons. You would see priority four, five as not something that a district may look at, so priorities one and two usually are the focus. So looking back to 2015, it's interesting how many of these things have gone up in priority from three, four, five up to one, two. So that's the point that we're at now. So taking a look at this nice zoomed-in photo from Google Earth, is the, moving it up on the middle school roof, so that would allow access for the auxiliary gym and many other spaces to have ventilation that they need to have more air in these spaces. Some bathroom upgrades universally, but outside the building, lighting upgrades both in and out in the rear parking lot, making sure that people are safe, that's going to be the main drive of everything is safety. So that's on middle school. Then Forest Brook, so again, door replacements, this district-wide initiative. Looking up at the top right, so obviously, there's a new playground there, but there's asphalt and blacktop and other areas that need revitalizing as well. So it's, you know, wonderful to finally have a new parking lot, but as you're stepping into the asphalt, it's important that no one is tripping on cracks or anything else. So that's a bit about site, thank you, cool. That's a bit about site reconfiguration there. And looking forward to Bretton Woods, so Bretton Woods, the asphalt area where the basketball courts are, same idea there. Along with that site reconfiguration idea would be along the parking lot as you drive into the back, expanding parking there, providing more parking spots for the universal pre-camp program that exists, and then the replacement of roof at the wing-two addition, which in previous years, now every single roof has been touched and done, it's just this one final section of an addition that happened after other things took place. So same thing, same theme, door replacements, system improvements, phone improvements, and then upgrades as far as lighting, ventilation, so on and so forth. Looking at pines, the same idea, when you're walking on a sidewalk, to limit the cracks, redo that whole area there, and then pines to provide additional parking spaces. With the growing universal pre-camp program and with growing teaching staff, it's really important that we have actual designated parking spaces and so that people are safe in the parking lots and coming into the building. Bathroom upgrades, this is an example, live at one of the hallways over there, and everything else is uniform for the remainder of the buildings within the district. Looking at the athletic fields, so we are looking on the high school side at revitalizing every aspect of the complex itself. So currently, as Dr. Murphy explained, there's no restroom whatsoever, you're using porta potties. So one proposal here is to bring out and build a new bathroom area, both by the football field and then again, at the north area, so that people aren't running back and forth, depending on what games are happening. Conception stand, that would have a total revitalization to give more opportunities for both students and community members. As you're walking up through, it would be ADA walkway, so there would be a nice pavement there with access for trucks to get to and from different fields. So no more mud, you would walk through a nice archway, and here goes the greater part of my brain, but allowing there to be a Walk of Heroes at a place that people are excited to enter, to say, oh, I'm here for the day, and I don't mind being here for the day. So looking at the football field itself, the grandstand to be redone, other improvements there to the track, the track to be resurfaced, and moving on to the town line and Lincoln intersection, creating new turf fields in that area, the tennis courts, total revitalization there, creating a couple more courts itself, two single courts, and in leg with lines for pickleball. Then coming along as you're driving through the teacher lot or the south lot, creation of a deck hop, you have 30 additional parking spots there, and then irrigation for all the fields and other things that are detailed here and on additional things throughout this constitution. So expanding a little bit on these photos, to the left is the current complex as you're looking towards the tennis courts, and to the right of that, an example of what a turf field would look like for the two fields, and maybe that's baseball in that example. To the right is the fitness center as it stands up top, and then below that, an example of what it could be as far as expansion, lighting upgrades, so on and so forth. And then the middle school athletic complex, so the top right is current handball, and then the bottom right is a reconfiguration of that. So allowing lines in the same place so that you can do multiple things, be it volleyball, basketball, handball. To the bottom left is the current track, so resurfacing there, and again, an ADA access path so that you can get around by walking. Bathroom accommodation right outside as you walk out the back towards the fields themselves. Patio gathering area, a grand entrance, a courtyard, an outdoor learning center for, or space for students to learn and be outside, and many other upgrades to all the existing parts of the fields and complexes themselves. So as Dr. Murphy explained before, so what does this mean? And at a value of $714,000, the impact would be $108 a year, or $9 a month, or 30 cents a day, depending on how you break that down. So looking at timeline and what happens from this point forward. So tonight is the board resolution, so going forward, there's public presentations at all the PTA meetings, and each PTA meetings will have detailed Q and A sessions. The website will be updated with a bond tab, which will list all presentations, all information, FAQ, you name it, so that all information lives in one place. And then as more is added to the website, I will certainly put it on the slides here so that if you're on it, everything's nice, easy, clickable. So after some of these PTA meetings, there's a public hearing November 6th with PTA Council coming through. November 14th is our next Board of Education meeting, where we will take a deeper dive into the bond and enter financial working of it, and then ultimately, the voter referendum on December 5th, 2023. Any questions?
I just want to thank Mrs. Siena and Dr. Murphy. Did any board members have any questions? Is any community members, yes, or?
Yeah, how long are we going to pay $108 roughly a year, in increase? How long do we have up? And maybe, do you hold the bond for 20 years, 30 years?
So it's a 15-year bond that we would hold, and the impact to the taxpayer for how long, that would be a deeper dive that we would need to do at the true impact there because of many different things that go into that.
So it can go past 15 years?
What was that?
It can go past 15 years?
No, the life of the bond is 15 years.
So the maximum would be 15 years?
Yes, yes, and that's how all bonds work. So as you start to exit 15 years, you're taking on either a new bond or a new project to make sure you're keeping that debt nice and even. The more even it is, the less fluctuation you're going to see to your tax levy. So the tax levy itself, we've pretty much been around 2%. That our goal here is to maintain that exactly, so there isn't that fluctuation in the tax debt.
I just want to point out one thing that we've talked about here, but I think deserves a little more spotlight. Part of the vision is for a wall of heroes, so I know that the board has been so supportive of some of the things we've been doing with our hometown heroes, parades and such. So the goal there is to have the dedicated place at the high school where we honor some of our heroes who've come through Hop-Hop and do it in a way where we have ceremonies right there at the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, the capital fund now, yeah, how much?
The capital reserve too, has roughly $4 million.
And the best of your ability, don't we put money every year, at least a million dollars in that fund?
Yes, we do, so.
Usually, usually at least a million, if not two.
Roughly about that, yes.
We backfeed that.
Yes.
And then when we dive deeper in, you want to take the bond and do these repairs, I just wanted to ask you, how long on average is a project, you're going to approve projects, spend money spent on? How long does that usually take, the whole process, at any given project to be built? Let's say, let's use the roof that we have, the gym, how long did that, by the time you put it up? Because we're having the bond run, we have this money loaned out, and it takes us two or three years to even get a project approved, we're paying money on, we're paying interest and stuff on a bond that we can use right off the bat.
Yeah, sure. So it's a whole long process. The process from board resolution to going to SED for approval to then deciding the design phase of the whole entire project itself. It's not feasible that $58 million would happen in one summer, which you're right, it would happen over phases. So we would determine as a subcommittee and board and greater hop-up to determine what exactly could be doable and feasible within a couple different phases. That helps us to stagger the debt and drag it out so that there isn't that initial blow to the taxpayer. Staggering it and allowing it over three phases will make sure that we sustain about a 2% tax levy from year to year. So if I.
No, so I fully understand, you're going to, you're wanting us to approve $58 million, but you're going to periodically take, if we approve it, then you don't have to borrow the 58 from day one, you can say, I got a project coming up, let's get 10 million to do those projects, and then five, you know, whatever. Two years later, I need another 10 million, so you don't have to keep going back for more money.
Correct, and then once we get SED approval, and we start to go out to bid, it won't be until that time, so let's say about the spring, that will go out for a bond or a ban. A ban is a bond anticipation note, and at that point, it would only be for whatever you have State Education Department approval on. So let's say it's $5 million, that would be the first initial ban, and from there, it would be a year out before we would pay that initial payment on it. So by staggering, you're kind of pushing it out a year that you start to up.
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted, I just wanted to get clear that bonds that were $58 million paid, which is on the small man.
At that point, the prudent approach is to align the work each year with priorities as part of the vision and what's manageable to get approved in a timely manner each summer, right? So and that allows us, again, the staggered approach, which you're paying interest on just what you borrowed, not until you borrow it, right? So you got it, yeah?
Secondary question on the projects.
Sure.
When you dive deeper into the projects, do you have a list that are the prior, like I know you categorize them. We have a list that are man, like not mandated, but more important than other ones, right? Do we have the course? Are we going to have the course for those?
Yes.
I know we go through the process, if you can't put something up and they vote, what is the vote on any approval of the projects? I just want to know that when you're dividing this list, like I see a lot of things being added, bathrooms outside and stuff. There's got to be a list where the most important things are roof leaking on people's heads and ventilation and stuff, that type of thing.
Yep. So the building condition survey will be available and that will list in its entirety everything from priority one to priority, any later priorities.
And as you can imagine, safety and security is kind of one to go to one and then everything chuckles down from there.
Are there any other questions with the community? Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Green, I just want to add one last thing. Sorry, anyone listening or in the audience, if you're unable to make one of the meetings of the PTA that you're normally aligned with, you can go to any of the meetings that we're going to have. You're locked in to go into this PTA or that PTA meeting. We're a big family, right? So come to any of that, whatever, Steve.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. We move on to five senior doctor minutes. This is meeting of Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion, second, in discussion, all those in favor? Move on to number six, questions and comments on tonight's agenda only from the community. So move on to our consent agenda, which is seven through seven point four, I believe. Okay. Are there any board members that want to separate any part of the consent agenda? Drop it here. Motion by Mrs. Savian, Secretary of Defense Bustarino. In discussion, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Move on to number. Eight, new policies, and number nine, a motion to approve the resolution as listed on the agenda.
Target.
Target, yeah, number nine, that's correct. I'm sure the attorney's looking for it. Did you vote on that, Steve? We get a motion, Dr. Kraper, second, in discussion, all those in favor? That's a lot of stuff here. So we're going to want the committee reports. Fortunately, we had some people out with family stuff, so we're going to push those. But what I'd like to do, Dr. Murphy, is I'm going to make a motion on the second. I want to form a bond subcommittee with Dr. Murphy and Mr. Barshay as the president, as co-chairs, and obviously, community members. Can I get a second? Dr. Kraper, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Put that in there, Mark. Thank you. Number eleven, discussion matters. Number twelve, new business, just a couple of questions, Dr. Murphy. This article came out today, preschool, maybe you know or don't know. Is that on for next year? Someone's telling me that it's, they're taking away the funding possibly.
Is that a New York? Hold the mic so that I work. I don't know if that's New York State or, but from New York State, I haven't heard anything.
Federal funds.
Yeah, so I, we're anticipating preschool again next year.
Students may like this, I don't know. The other article in Newsday with the future of Regent's exams. Do we know that in a way?
So there's a commission that's coming out with a report in November that the commissioner had authorized that will be revealing the findings of different ideas related to exit, students exiting high school, Regent's exams. Of course, a part of that discussion, but they may have other ways for students to show their understanding of content. So we will, once that report comes out, we will dissect that as a cabinet and admin team and then we will update the board and the community.
I think actually, Mr. Whitehouse, you're here, I don't know if we have the middle school, but the marching band that we have in the high school, do they participate in the marching band festival? It's a midfield. I just want to make sure we're giving them the support. It was a big article in the paper of the day. We're thirteen, any questions and comments from the community?
Hey, can someone just go over the old gym situation with the leak and everything? I think I missed it. Can someone bring me up the stuff, how that actually occurred and all the background? Who's paying for it? Who, you know, the whole accident or whatever happened? All the details about it?
Yeah, so I'll jump in, Mrs. Sienna, go ahead. I missed something. We have a roof, high school roof project going on this summer. During the course of the summer, we had some terrible rain and there was a leak beyond the leak. It was coming down pretty hard to the gym. And as you know, when water hits a floor, it can cause all sorts of chaos. So it was determined that there was no easy way to fix that floor, pulling out the patch for that work. So it became the reality that we had to replace the entire gym floor. The good news is that insurance is taking care of, is taking care of the funding of that replacement. The bad news was that it put, set us back a bit to start the year. But, you know, that was well received once we unveiled it early October to our students that they have this brand-new gym floor. So that was actually part of the bigger vision. That, that project now came out of the bond since we were able to take it sooner.
You mentioned insurance, our insurance or the roofing? There's this part of the roof that the roofers weren't dealing with.
Yeah, the insurance companies will be.
Fight no, fight no roof ban? Because, right, they were touching that part of the roof, right? They were up there. Was that part or not? Like, you know, I know you divide, you know, sections and roofs and sometimes we only do one section versus another. That's why they should go with another. Definitely that roofers were in that section.
We were able to tap into insurance and our insurance is contacting their insurance because there was, in our opinion, reasons why that could have been avoided.
Lastly, that roof, again, I'm just hearing what people talk about. Did we have recently another leak in another area of that gym recently with the rainfall? Does anybody know of? Because that's what I.
No.
There might have been another. Yeah, not as major as, not as major as the first leak, but just recently.
No, whatever. We're in a good shape.
That's fair.
Any other questions from the community? Yes.
Separate, separate thing, because I asked this a while back. The revenue we get from this building, did that increase this past year? Or did we increase it this summer? Because I think the contract came up, or I think every year, summertime, we renew.
Yes, every year since the school year runs, or the fiscal year runs, July one through June thirtieth, all contracts are renewed, yes.
Okay. Did we increase the contract with the companies that are in this building?
Yes, we did.
You don't have what percentage, roughly? Or can you find out? Because I just would like to, our taxes go up a certain percentage every year. I'd like everybody to pay an increase along with.
I said, yes, maybe just initially directly.
That's fine.
So I don't want to, I want to make sure we get that right.
Mrs. Sienna, I'll reach out to you.
Any other questions? Have another special thanks again for rounding through five sixty from Bretton Woods and the Pines. Fantastic. Our next business meeting will be Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The primary, the motion second to the chairman, the primary, the project. In discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Have a very nice season.
Thank you.